Is this on here? Is it on or off? Is it on? Are we, are we, are we on? I know.
You're not broadcasting. There's nothing.
Oh, okay. Okay, Buenas. We are on. I'd like to thank the following senators who are here with us this morning. The Vice Speaker, Senator Blasches, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Duñez, Senator Yamashita, and Senator Mabini. One, two, three, four, five, six. So these are all that are present in the hall. The legislature is back in session. And the first bill on the agenda this morning is Bill Number 161-31. I recognize the author, Senator Cruz, the Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 161-31 to the third reading file, and I'd ask for a short opportunity to speak.
Yes, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 161 is actually a very simple bill. It seeks to amend the current statute that we have as it relates to the Guam Commission on Educated Certification. When we passed the bill to establish the commission, we included a provision in it, and you'll see that on Page Two of the other bill. A member is absent from any four, if a member is absent from any four regularly scheduled meetings in any calendar year, his or her office as a member of the commission shall be deemed vacant. The motion, the bill moves to strike this provision. Madam Speaker, this provision, though well-intended to try to make sure that people attend commissions and fulfill their responsibilities, is onerous. It does not provide for medical leave, I mean, any medical excuses. It doesn't, it's not even three consecutive like we have in all the other commissions. It's just in any calendar year, four absences will be deemed grounds for which to vacate the position. This was okay when we passed the bill because we thought that the GCEC would only meet quarterly, and missing four meetings would mean that you missed every meeting that year, and rightfully should be removed if you didn't attend a meeting at all that year. Unfortunately, because of the fact that this is a new commission, this commission has been meeting sometimes twice a month, if not more. And as a consequence, the four, the statute reading for absences as grounds to vacate the position has resulted in one very good member of the GCEC having to be removed by statute. And so the commission came to my office, and actually, my, one of my staffers used to be the executive director, and pointed out to the fact that this is an onerous provision, asked for the assistance of the legislature to amend the law, to strike that provision, and just allow it to go by way of all the other boards and commissions that three consecutive absences that the commission could make a motion to remove that, that member of their various commissions. So it's a very simple amendment, but the removal of that section will really help the GCEC in doing its work and meeting as often as it does, and will allow for more people who would be willing to serve on commissions, and especially this one, to assure that the, our teachers are properly certified to address the educational needs of our students. It's a very simple amendment. I ask for my colleagues' support, and I thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to present this at the top of the agenda.
On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on it? None, so Vice Speaker then, a motion to send?
I make motion to send it to the voting pile. Thank you.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Amended Bill Number 146-31 COR, recognize the author, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to ask that the body accept Bill 146-31 as amended by the Committee on Appropriations to Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land.
It's, it's already accepted, so without further...
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move Bill 146-31 to the third reading file and ask for a short opportunity to speak.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, first, I'd like to thank the Committee on Appropriations and Taxation for the hard work that they did on amending this bill. They conducted a hearing, and we received testimony from Customs and Quarantine and various other individuals. I think if you can access the, the committee report, you'll see that it was very well attended. Several people from Customs and Quarantine spoke on, on the issue. Everybody that spoke supported the intent of the bill. The intent of the bill, Madam Speaker, was to prevent the importation of tobacco products from places other than where they should be coming from. And the reason for this was that there was a news story that a couple of stores around Ireland, in contravention of our increase of the tobacco tax, were selling tobac, cigarettes that they were, were brought in from the Philippines. They were selling them for $2.75 a pack, which is even less than the tax that we imposed on, on tobacco products. And the reason they were able to do that was that they were bypassing revenue and taxation in bonding all of the products, tobacco products when they come in, and paying the tax up front like all the other regular distributors on this island. And as a consequence, there was this whole underground, bootlegged economy that was going on in getting these cigarettes into the island. And it had other effects, Madam Speaker, in that we were not sure about what the contents of some of those cigarettes were. You and I both attended that conference this weekend on, on tobacco cessation that the University of Guam put up, and I wasn't sure if you heard the testimony or were there at the time. But when the kids went out and were doing their, their interviews and taking pictures of the various stores throughout the island, they actually came upon a store where the workers in the store were taking these bootlegged cigarette packs and actually sticking onto the side the Surgeon General warning. And the reason why they were having to put that on the side of the cigarettes is was that they weren't coming in from the United States, they weren't properly cleared by revenue and taxation or public health, and they were hoping that nobody would catch them, and they were going to be selling them for $2.75 and not paying any taxes to, to the government of Guam. And so the good Committee on Appropriation and Taxation has gone through and has added a new section on bona fide importer and exporter to make sure that they are individuals who have, or companies that have been recognized and licensed by the Department of Revenue and Taxation to be bona fide importers and exporters of tobaccos. They provided some amendments on what can or cannot be brought in as it relates to personal use of tobacco products that we are unfortunately not going to prevent people from, from hand carrying cigarettes in from, from the Philippines. But the amount of cigarettes that they're going to be able to bring in from the Philippines or other points in Asia are going to be limited to 12 packs of cigarettes, or 1,000 cigarettes, or five cartons, which is what is the, the max that you can bring in. They've also instructed Customs and Quarantine to keep a log of who comes in and out, because when businesses, businessmen or some frequent travelers travel in and out of the Philippines, some of them can make three or four trips, maybe five trips a month to the Philippines, and bring in 25 cartons of cigarettes. And the law only allows for five per month, and so there's going to be also that provision. I'd like to thank the committee for having included that in, in the, in the amended version of the bill. And it provides for forfeiture of the, these imported products, and the amount of money, the fine that's going to be imposed will be three times the amount of the value of the commodity that is being brought in. And that to incentivize Department of, I mean, Department, Customs and Quarantine Agency to be diligent in their, in their policing of this, the, the fines that are going to be imposed will be kept in the Customs and Quarantine Forfeiture Fund for their, for their operations. And I think that's, that's it, Madam Speaker. And again, I'd like to thank the Chair and the committee for its hard work in amending this bill, making it even stronger and better. And the, I'd like to also ask, make a motion that, in light of your interest in this area, if you could be named as the co-sponsor of the bill.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
I thank you very much for the opportunity to present this bill and ask for my colleagues' support.
You're welcome. On the motion, would anyone like to speak on motion? Speaker Panglin, and you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 146 as amended by the committee, and thank the good author. You know, it's kind of ironic that we're trying to protect the cigarette industry. I think, though, the message we want to send is that we're trying to protect legitimate businesses who follow the rules on Guam. You know, it, everything that we've done over the years with regards to tobacco and cigarette has been towards an eye on improving the health of our community by encouraging and putting in place programs and funding mechanisms to discourage smoking in our community. You know, I take my dad to the doctor every, every appointment that he has, and in every room, you'll see a chart that tells you about the effect of cigarettes, and how fast you can recover your health after quitting for just three days, after six days, after a month. You know, in three days, your kind of blood circulation improves by 36 percent, and in a week's time, you're up to 70 percent. And all of these things are what you do to yourself when you smoke. And what we're trying to do with this bill is, I look at it as, we will continue working towards the effort of discouraging smoking, because we will no longer allow rogue individuals to bring in underpriced illegal cigarettes into our community and undersell the market that we have here with the taxes that are then devoted to smoking programs, smoking cessation programs. So we are, yes, we are protecting the legitimate businesses that follow the rules on Guam, that import the, the products that they import, in this case tobacco, tobacco products, bring them in and follow the rules, pay the taxes, and, you know, and, and that is what we want to see happen. And when you search circuit and circumvent those legitimate and legal processes by bringing in these cigarettes surreptitiously, then you're undermining your business base, and in this case, the tobacco business base. It goes to show you that really, we are not biased in who we want to protect. This will benefit all cigarette, legitimate cigarette importers. That includes Midpac and, and the others, Ambrose and so forth. So this is our demonstration to the governor, we're being unbiased and fair. But Madam Speaker, we still need to continue to address the issue of how do we protect the legitimate businesses in our community who follow the rules. And we'll have another bill that you have introduced, and we, in the committee, are continuing to work on it. I beg your indulgence and the time it has taken our committee to work through the issues that you presented in that bill. But they are good issues, and, and they will also protect the legitimate businesses in our community. And so that we do have, coming out of this body, initiatives that understand and respect those individuals who put their capital at risk in our community, invest in creating jobs and industry, and provide economic activity that support the people of Guam. And this body, and this majority, and the memberships of this body, all have worked on differing issues over time. And so this is just another example of this body and this, and specific senators in here hearing what is of concern to our business community, addressing those concerns, and working through the process that ensures that we have the legal infrastructure to protect these individuals who want to legitimately do business in Guam, follow the law, and pay their taxes, and provide opportunity and jobs for our people. So even though it may not be the industry that is in favor with our own personal philosophy, the overarching and overriding figure, emphasis here that I want to place is that these are legal entities who follow the law, and we need to encourage and protect them and provide them with a legal infrastructure that it would be, that will ensure them that they're not going to be competing against individuals who otherwise choose to ignore the laws that we have, and the responsibilities that one has when they decide to go into business in this community. So from that perspective is what I would like to, to present in terms of why I think this bill is important and why we need to support it, and commend the author, and now the co-author of the bill, for your support and your diligence in looking at these, listening to the, to the members of our community, responding to those concerns, and working within this body to provide the solution that will help these individuals protect their investment, support their desire to be successful, and provide the legal protections for those of them who follow the law, and provide jobs and opportunity for their employees as well as the people of Guam. Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the motion, I recognize Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of Bill 146. And just like the, the previous speaker, Speaker Ben, I agree that this legislation really, you know, what it does is protects the legitimate businesses who, who follow the laws and follow the regulations in when, in importing these products to our island. The, the good author, the Vice Speaker, has been very consistent in ensuring that, you know, you know, with the increase in tobacco tax several years ago, really was meant to, to discourage the use of tobacco products. And, you know, I'm happy to say that it's working, because we've seen the, the revenues that, that come in on taxes that are decreasing. But then we have people in the community who look for ways to circumvent, you know, and circumvent the law and find ways to, to bring in tobacco products at a, at a cheaper, and sell it to our people at a cheaper cost. And so what this does really is just tighten up that loophole and really, you know, make it perfectly clear that it's our intention to discourage, really, Madam Speaker, at least for me, to discourage the use of tobacco product, because we all know the health hazards that it causes to, to our people, and even the health hazards that it caused to bystanders, people who don't choose to, to smoke or use these products but are, are in harm's way. And so I know later on, in session, we have another bill that will deal with, with secondhand smoke. And so I rise in support, and I ask our colleagues to, to please support this, this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Rodriguez. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on it? Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close? Okay, so on the motion, then, to send Bill 146-31 then to the voting pile without any objections, so ordered. We're now on Bill Number 150-31, and I recognize the author. Senator V.A. Addo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as said, Bill 150-31 COR enacted and amend paragraph 16 of 3103(c) of G-17 GCA relative to Department of Education Management audits. Move to the second, third reading pile. I'd like to speak on the motion.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what Bill 150 entails to do is it will require that management audits include the board and provide an analysis of how DOE implemented the recommendations of the prior year audits. We know that the current management audit is limited to the management of DOE, and within this past year, as we all know, that the composition of the Guam Education Policy Board has changed now to allow for appointed members. And this will give an opportunity to have the parents of Guam's schoolchildren to know how well this new policy board is serving the educational needs of our children. And also, this bill would require the management audits to analyze how well DOE did at implementing the recommendations of the past management audits. Each audit, it'll include a report and evaluation on the degree of success that the Department of Education has achieved at implementing the recommendations and correcting the deficiencies identified in that immediate prior audit. We should, and this would let us know exactly how well our education, our educational department is doing at managing its resources, and whether they're actually implementing and correcting the deficiencies within our school system. I ask my colleagues to please support this bill, and hopefully this will get us to have our educational department move a step forward and, and start being the educational facilities and, and personnel that we all look forward to having our, our schoolchildren attend and be educated by. Thank you.
On the motion, I have Senator Duñez and Senator Yamashita.
Good morning, Madam Speaker.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. And thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 150. I want to commend the author, and as, as you know, Madam Speaker, over the years, we've all had questions about our educational system, how it's performing, and at the end of the day, we recently now have an Evergreen Report that exists, an audit, to, to take a look at, you know, our system, and see how well it's performing, and, and to, to see what we can do to improve. At the end of the day, what's really paramount is to ensure that all of the money that we spend in our educational system ends up as much as possible in the classroom where teaching and learning happens. And I want to commend the author, because audits shouldn't be a one-time thing that get placed on the shelf, and we'll look at it if we want to. I believe audits should be an ongoing thing. Mr. Speaker, we see now consistently the efficacy of, of the public auditor's office, and the audits that she performs, and even the mediation she performs sometimes to get through difficult and contentious issues. But audits give an opportunity to allow outside eyes to come into a system that sometimes can't see things or don't want to see things within their system that need to be corrected and need to be changed. And so I commend the author. I'm in full support of this measure, and I think that as we move forward together with this good piece of legislation, we will ensure, as we move forward, Mr. Speaker, that at every possible turn, the money that's spent in our educational system ends up exactly where it belongs, and that's in the classroom where teaching and learning happens. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I too stand in full support of Bill Number 150, and while I'm always really careful about defining legislative policy and board policy, I think we've come to a time where it, it is helpful to help the board. We invest so much money into our public school system, and we continue to have great concerns. We have cafeterias that are shut down, we have schools that open late, we have overcrowded schools, the list of issues go on, and it is not for a lack of money. I don't think it ever has been for a lack of money. I think the Guam Legislature has always been incredibly supportive of our school system. I've, I've often likened it to a, there's a leaking bucket here. We keep putting the money in, and yet we still have a lot of issues. So I think this piece of legislation, if enacted, if passed and supported, will ensure that we do formative assessments throughout, that throughout the year, as determined by the board, they'll decide what it is that the targets are and how we're to ensure that we are moving forward as we need to. We shouldn't wait the three days before school opens to know that our cafeterias are in such disrepair, nor should we be in our second week of school when we find out that we still have many students waiting for bus rides. And while I will agree that we've gotten better at filling our, our positions, there are fewer and fewer vacancies, and there are more, in fact, I haven't heard, and probably this afternoon I will hear it once I say this, but I don't think there are any classrooms without teachers, and I don't think there are any kids in the cafeterias this year. And I congratulate the school system for doing better in that category. But there are operational issues that need to be strengthened and addressed, and I think formative assessment where we go along and we know what it should look like, and we address it immediately, will keep us from reacting. So I think the, the notion of continuous auditing, continuous evaluation, knowing what we need to have, and then addressing it as we go on, will help us. I'm also well aware that we have board policies on, on the books that are really outdated. And so there are, once in a while, through the legislature, we update those policies, and I think that is helpful. But I also think that the board, and I understand, I think that they are doing this now, reviewing the board policies on their own and updating as needed. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 150. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yamashita. Dr. Mabini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I commend the author and the co-sponsor... I commend the author and the co-sponsor for introducing the amendments to the existing legislation regarding school management audits. And I reflect back, like on page two, the second page, I reflect back, back in 2006 when I helped write the audit specifications. And this is exactly what we were aiming at back then, was that people like us, people like the university, the Department of Education, our community continues to pay attention and pay attention to the formative assessment or the assessment throughout the process to make sure that they are following through, that they are abiding by the procedures that they're setting up for themselves. And so I commend again the author for submitting this and strengthening the intent of the original legislation. And what, and I would ask a question, if I could ask a question to the author, if he would consider adding or if he wouldn't mind an amendment that would include the submission of this report to some of the key individuals who would benefit from learning. So for instance, it would be the legislature as well as, I believe, our speaker also has led several conferences that responded to the Evergreen Report. So if I could ask the author if he's willing to receive that.
Senator Addo, do yield. There was a request by Senator Mabini to add some reports, submissions by legislature and others. Do you want to take, let's take a minute. Minute recess. Senator Mabini, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would, we are working currently on the amendment, so if I can make a motion to work on the amendment, on the bill, and then we could possibly move on to other bills.
Okay. Thank you very much for your consideration. Are there any other speakers? Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the bill and, you know, create a dialogue here. What the bill, of course, is doing is that, if you look in the bill, it is the original bill as mandated about a education management audit and that it's only to include two new items, E and F, to this. What I'd like to bring our colleagues' attention to is that, you know, customarily in education, especially in higher education, especially educational institutions, that they would establish and conduct periodic assessments and a review process also that would meaningfully inform the institution of some of the things, the decisions that they have to make, how they're going to plan and how they're going to budget. And this review process is normally by their stakeholders, individuals right within the institution. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we don't then somehow anonymously use then assessments that are done in institution versus an audit. These periodic assessments are formative in nature while audits are normally summative, that means after-the-fact review of actions that have been taken. Audits are normally those that are contracted out and usually performed by a third party, whereas a review process is conducted by those within the system and most of the time without compensation, or at least, you know, at a nominal rate if there are stipends or travel reimbursement. So while I recognize then the need for a review of the department's policies and processes, I'm asking the body to reconsider because I know I've reported the bill out, but then I've been having other discussions again with board members because, you know, they're going through this whole process right now and determining then what is it that they can or can't do and yet we're mandating other things to them and then they can't even take any action. So some of the concern has been is that if we're going to do this now, then normally this will come with that requisition of a budget, so to speak, an appropriation then for them, to allow them then to use, either use within their budget or request for an additional funding of anywhere between $50,000 to $150,000 to be able to conduct this audit, whereas internally, and the Department of Education actually has internal auditors, and these are also stakeholders then, that you can actually provide and collect some of the data for the auditors, the internal auditors, to be able to do. So what then, my recommendation that I'm really getting at too, and I've spoken to the primary and secondary authors of the bill, is that my recommendation then is that rather than using the word "audit" here, because we don't want them to come back again and blame the legislature that this is an unfunded mandate, because where there is that, to instead substitute the word "audit" with "assessment." And I think with that language, of course, then they'll be able to do this institutionally and district-wide. And then I think if there's an amendment that's going to be proffered by our colleague here, Senator Mabini, to actually tie this in, that once they do this assessment, then what happens? Rather than just throwing it back again to the legislature and said, you know, "You told us to do this, you didn't give us money, we're not going to do it," or "Then we did it and we took money from our budget and then, you know, well, now fund," you know, all of these. But I think what's important here is that when members, the stakeholders, do an assessment of their own institution, they really are taking ownership of some of the shortcomings or what, you know, what they need to do. And by taking ownership of it, then that means they would then be able to now move forward at making the changes, correcting and implementing some of these changes in order for it then to work. So my amendment then, Mr. Speaker, is then, is that where you see the word "audit" is that if we can replace that with the word "assessment."
Is the Wampat amendment clear to all the members and do any members wish to be heard on the proposed amendment? All right. Any objection to the Wampat amendment? Hearing none. We're still awaiting, any other speaker on the bill itself, since we're still waiting for Senator Mabini? Senator Blosson and Senator Panglino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I stand in support of the legislation and, you know, some of the things, and of course, the most recent amendment proffered by the good speaker. You know, in a previous legislature, one of our previous colleagues had always expressed a fear that every time that we bring up this certain entity, this certain agency within the government, it costs us millions of dollars. And as a result of even just the amendment proffered by and passed by the good speaker, these are some of the fixes that don't necessarily require that and actually would help to maximize the amounts, the monies that we provide to them. You know, I know this body takes great pains in almost every time that we, you know, that we try to provide the resources to the Department of Education to make sure that they get the funding that they need so that they can continue to get the resources. But there are concerns that are expressed by many of us, me included, that sometimes we would provide the money we would provide the money, and it just, the problem never seems to get fixed. And this legislation provides that mechanism, that tool, to start to ensure that we, that the Department of Education is maximizing its resources. I appreciate with regards to what the legislation provides in being able to evaluate board policies and certain actions and practices as a result of trying to implement those policies. I say that because, you know, just very recently, we were, this body had discussed, was discussing legislation that included a provision that provides the Department of Education the authority to be able to make bulk purchases for textbooks. But you know, that when the Department of Education itself, right now, as most especially in the elementary school, when they have at least three recognized curriculums, Success for All, Direct Instruction, and PRL, spread out amongst the limited number of, or the public school systems we got, it's very difficult to be able to take advantage of bulk purchasing when you're going to have to buy three different science books for the same grade. And then, on top of that, you have one school, and because we're talking about the elementary school, I can just think within the radius of Mingila, in Mingila through Baragada, we've got basically about three, four. We've got Adakau, Price, PC Luhan, and Carbolito. Okay? Each of them have different curriculums. And the problem that we may get there is that you've got this third grader, or this kid, who may start off in Carbolito, then the family moves, and then he moves over to Price Elementary, then the family moves again, then he moves over to PC Luhan for the third grade, and then by the fourth grade he moves to Adakau, guess what? He went through four different curriculums. And then, we have to buy four different books. But if you look at the board policy with regards to curriculum, it's one standard. It says that every third grader within our public school system has got to be able to learn, or should be able to learn, these things. Mr. Speaker, you know that many, a few years ago, I was a critic of a certain program that I believed wasn't following the board policy with regards to the curriculum. I still have some concerns with that. But I appreciate this legislation, because it provides now an evaluation of that policy. Because I don't believe that that's happening. I don't believe that we're following that. And if it takes an evaluation of the powers that be there to be able to put it in line, or to make those necessary changes, so that we do follow it, then this provides that process. I agree, and I appreciate that there's going to be a discussion, and there's a proffer, there's going to be a proffer of the amendment, that would basically take this tool, take this assessment, and give it some teeth. It's one thing to have, before we, before the amendment provided by the good speaker, we had audits performed in the government of Guam Com a dime a dozen. It's what we do with those audits. Now it's, now we call it an assessment, and for good reason. But my concern is making sure that if the assessment is done, is conducted, that something happens to it. If we find that there's something that needs to get done as a result of that assessment, as a result of that study, that we put teeth to it, that we require that corrective action be taken. And a lot of times, and we're going to find, Mr. Chair, that you're going to find that as a result of this assessment, and truly looking at the resources that it had, it may not even require for us to be able to address funding shortfalls. Just that one provision alone to provide them bulk purchasing for books. You know, Mr. Chair, I tell you, I'm a member, board member, for a nonprofit organization that very recently sent a forty-foot container, is sending, a process, sending, a forty-foot container full of books provided by, got by the Department of Education, that were still in its plastic bundles, had not been opened, and we spent millions of dollars for them. And we're going to send it away. You know, in this assessment, we can also include possibly looking at partnering with other places. You know, my wife is a teacher within the educational system. And just the other day, she brought in some supplies that were provided to her, she and a couple of friends went to different places, so that they can see how they can increase their inventory to provide educational resources and tools to the kids. It's amazing, Mr. Speaker, and I'm not going, for lack of not saying where it came from, my wife came home with two boxes, and she went online, she says, "Let me show you. If I was to buy these online, it would have cost my credit card about eight hundred dollars." But she found a place where she was able to get it for free, because you know what? It was going to be thrown away, it was going to be burned. Where I would have spent eight hundred dollars, they found it in a surplus area, and it was going to be burned, and it's brand-new. Still in his wrappers. And I think that's the value of what this legislation is going to provide. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to give them the tools, the resource, the, basically the direction of conducting those assessments, looking at all, even going back to the evaluation of the number of management audits and assessments that were done previously, and look to them and see, okay, you know, two, a couple of years ago, Evergreen said that this was the case, this was a concern. Here was their recommendation as to how was, this was going to be taken care of. What have we done since then? Mr. Speaker, have you seen the Evergreen report? And I know there's, as far as contentious with regards to the whole thing, but you know what was really embarrassing? Okay? And I just saw this last night. I just saw this last night. Okay? I, and, yeah, I, when I saw you turn red, I said, okay, I struck an iron somewhere. Okay? I struck an iron somewhere. But you know, that said, Mr. Speaker, you know, it may be water under the bridge with the, as to how it got there, or where it went, but it's there. Do I, do I appreciate or agree of the amount of money that we spent? Could we have done this, or no? Yes, we could have, but it's there. But the fact of the matter is, is that there were, there was information that's in there that I felt, okay, you're right, let's look into this. But are we looking into it? And so, I applaud the author, and the co-sponsor, and I also want to applaud the good chair of the committee. Because I know, you know, the passion that the three of them have with regard, with regards to this, with regards to the Department of Education, and this is providing that A tool that shouldn't, a tool that should not cost a cent, but is going to realize millions. But more importantly, it's going to provide a safe and a learning environment, and it should provide a safe and a learning environment in our public school system. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak on the legislation, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues to please consider favorably on this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blosson. Senator Panglinen, I believe she's still preparing. Oh, she's, it's circulated? Senator Mabini? Oh, no, this is Senator Espichio's amendment. Are you, are you ready with your amendment? All right, we'll take a short minute recess.
We're going to get an override.
Start the motor like this? Come on, Rory.
We're going to get an override.
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 This is my, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I guess I just want to kind of get this thing framed correctly in my mind. The addition of this is to, a directive to the board? If I could just ask the author to yield?
Just the author yield.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Please. So this is, we're telling the board to do this.
Yes, this will, the, this will also include the, the board.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. You know, Mr. Speaker, I support this. I think these are important things, and certainly continued reexamination and examination of the systems and the processes in place in the public school system should be able to help. But you know, I'm always kind of leery when we kind of tell people to go out and hire consultants, to have them determine what's best for them. You know, my definition of a consultant, Mr. Speaker, and over my years of experience in the private sector, I had a boss who was very frugal, and boy, did he kind of always, he respected consultants, but he told me one time, he goes, "You know, Ben, you know what the definition of a consultant is?" And I said, "No, Doc, Dr. Gumbiner, what is it?" He goes, "A consultant is somebody you hire, and the question you want answered is, what time is it? And he asks you to borrow your watch, takes your watch, tells you, if you want me to tell you what time it is, he'll tell you the time from your watch, and then charge you for it." Meaning that really, the solutions to the problems that we have are contained all within our own internal resources. And I sometimes cringe when we kind of always think, or value more the outside perspective than the internal collective perspective that will help us fix things. But we always kind of think that if we're paying for something, then it's more valuable and probably more accurate. And we tend to sometimes discount those individuals within our own system who work in day in and day out, that know just the small things we need to change that will fix things and make things more efficient. And I go back to an example that is really, one of the authors of this legislation is so familiar with. When one of the authors, Senator Yamashita, was in the public school system as a deputy director, they, all they did was, they said, "Somebody map out for us, how many steps does a purchase order to buy a box of chalk takes? And why does it take so long to buy a box of chalk and get it out to the school?" And so, they just gathered a couple of their people, and mapped it out, traced it from the time the teacher says, "I need a box of chalk," to the time they talk to the principal, to the time the principal talks to the procurement, to the time the procurement talks to the buyer, to the time the buyer issues the RFP, to the time there's response to the RFP, to the time that a purchase order is cut, to the time that it's delivered, to the time that it's received, to the time it gets back to the buyer to log it in, to the time it gets to the warehouse man to drive it to the school, to the time it gets to the school, to the principal, and the time it takes the principal to give it to the teacher. And it took like forty-two steps, I think, if I remember correctly. And they said, ridiculous. And they revamped the system. And I think that what we need is that kind of introspective review of our processes and our systems. I think we need that with the air conditioner. Why does it take so long for the air conditioners to get replaced or repaired? Why does it take so long for such and such to occur within our system? And I think that this will help, but I also don't want to kind of build a dependency that this is what will give us the solution. I don't want to give this false sense of security that until we do this, we won't know how to fix our school system, and we won't know how to do our how to fix our school system and we won't know how to do our processes until we get an external eye. And so I support this, and maybe this is more the systematic, bigger picture issue, but I really think we also need to encourage the administration and the people within DOE for that introspective review from their internal resources and their internal intelligence because there's a lot of intelligent people there. And we've got to bring them in, have them engage, and have those extra links that do not connect anything at all disengaged and remove those extra links in the chain that is not necessary for that chain to be continuous, that they're just detours in the process of providing the resources to our educational professionals within our schools. So that's the only thing I wanted to kind of bring a perspective on. I don't disapprove, I don't disagree with what we're trying to do here, but I also want to emphasize and articulate that we hope we don't become dependent on these and that we continue to engage and harness the resources we have there today internally to help fix our school system. So I support the bill and certainly commend the authors on it, but again, the need to not be dependent on this for all the solutions that we see within our school system. Thank you, Sidus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Mabini, our...no. Senator Rispicio will take a short recess.
Very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 150. I do have an amendment, but before I...maybe just I'll move the amendment now and speak on the amendment and that'll cover my thoughts on the entire bill. So I want to move to add a new section two to provide for the disposition of assessment findings. And what this amendment will do, Mr. Speaker...first can I move to accept for purpose of discussion?
So without objection.
Thank you. And for what this amendment will do, Mr. Speaker, is that whenever there's an assessment done pursuant to this act, the GDOE superintendent shall submit this to the Guam Board of Direct Education members within 30 days, and then within 60 days of receipt of such assessment findings, the Guam Education Board member shall, in a regularly scheduled board meeting held in compliance with the open government law, vote to accept or reject the assessment findings and shall take any necessary actions for the disposition thereof. I'm asking that this amendment be included in this bill so that we're not providing a means of just having yet another report that's going to be placed on some planner's shelf or also, Mr. Speaker, we're not providing for an assessment to be done only to just not give the Board of Education an opportunity to take action on any of those findings. Previous speaker talked about the Evergreen Report, and I know that you've been a very vocal...I don't want to say critic, and I don't want to use that term negatively, but Mr. Speaker, you have raised the issue of why no one has moved forward at all on the Evergreen Report, and in my mind's eye, the board never took action because the superintendent never presented that to the board formally or by way of some kind of a nexus. And so this amendment forces everybody's hand in this situation. It forces the superintendent's hand to convey this assessment findings to the board within 30 days, and then that superintendent will interact and dialogue with the board, and then the board, within 60 days, it'll force their hand so that they can publicly decide whether or not they're going to accept and reject those findings. I'll use the Evergreen Report again as a fine example of how we saw a lot of play between the superintendent and the board. And then finally, when the board moved to adopt those findings, to say that if you closed FQ Sanchez, you would save $156,000, when we had a colleague offer an amendment to cover that cost, all of a sudden their position changed from, "Oh, it's not $156,000, but it's more like the amount, total amount necessary to fund the entire school." And this kind of confusion was very confusing. I don't imagine what kind of confusion would not be confusing, Mr. Speaker, but in this case, there was really a lot of back and forth. And you know, if we're serious about telling the Department of Education that they must conduct these assessments, and they pay top dollar to have people come in and do these kinds of assessments and provide some kind of policy recommendations, if we're serious about telling them to do that, then we also have to be serious about making them have the authority to make the decision on whether or not those findings will be accepted or rejected. Again, this amendment also continues to respect the board members as rightfully so, some elected, some appointed. And so the board members, once the 30 days are up, they can talk to the superintendent and ask why he or she has not made this presentation or formally transmitted. That I understand that Senator Mabini's amendment will go...take this amendment a step further and require that it be transmitted to maybe the legislature, to the governor, posted on various websites, maybe even transmit to the public auditor. I know she's working that amendment, but I ask for due consideration that we adopt section, a new section added to this bill so that we can have some kind of closure and some kind of finality with respect to what's actually done with these assessments.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. On the Rispicio amendment, any senators wish to be heard?
Mr. Speaker, I'm open to the number of days. I just want some kind of process. So if there's any recommendations to increase the number of days from 30 to 45, I'd like to hear that we entertain that.
Anybody wish to address the Rispicio amendment? Senator Adda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The author of the amendment will be acceptable to a 60-day reporting period. I would like to proffer that.
It'll be 60 days from the superintendent?
Forty-five days. Forty-five days.
I think it's like deja vu. I think what he's asking is that we increase the 30 to 45 days and we increase the 60 to 90 days, and I'm certainly open to that.
On the Adda amendment to increase...to amend the Rispicio amendment to have the reportings 45 and 90, anybody wish to address the Adda amendment to the Rispicio amendment? No. Forty-five to nine...forty-five and 90. Hearing, no objection. The Adda amendments are accepted. On the Rispicio amendment, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the United States Chair, and I want to thank good senator from Agania Heights. This actually helps to address the concern that I had with regards to, you know, it's one thing to be able to conduct the assessments, and every once in a while, we've seen them before, it was called management audits and whatnot, and...but this also provides that the teeth...starts to provide the teeth necessary in this tool to make sure that something is happening. You know, with regards to how it gets done and everything, I have to agree that, you know, the concern is...and I have...I think we all agree here. There are people within the system that can be able to conduct, you know, those processes, and it's not necessary to go out and hire an individual to tell us what time it is on our watch. You know, I think we're very capable enough of being able to do this, it's just having to be able to do it. But at the same token, I appreciate this amendment because it does provide some finality as was spoken by Senator Rispicio, put some finality in making sure that, okay, when we talk about the assessment, we want something done and we want time specific, we want time period so that we can make...we can make the decisions necessary, and we don't have to drag it and we don't have to wait till three days before school starts before we figure out that we don't have the...that our cafeterias aren't ready again. So thank you very much, and I am in support of the amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Any other senators wish to speak on the Rispicio amendment? Any objection to the Rispicio amendment? Hearing none. On the main bill, are there any other speakers? Senator Mabini, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad that the question that I raised earlier spurred a lot of discussion so that we can make sure that we can tighten this bill so it becomes a very good bill that will hold everybody accountable and improve our issues at the Guam Department of Education. I move to add actually a new section which will strengthen further the bill, and this would be basically requiring the posting on the website. So the amendment would be a new section three whereby the department shall post on its website and transmit to the Speaker of Ilheshla Turanguahan and the Chairman of the Committee on Education, the disposition and plan of action of the assessment findings, and that would just hold them further accountable. It'll be posted, we'll see, we'll be able to monitor their progress, and anybody, whether it's the OPA or the governor, should be able...or any citizen should be able to see this on the website and recognize the progress and hold our agencies accountable, and hopefully our students will be able to benefit from the positive changes. And I wish the author would accept the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On the Mabini amendment for the posting of the final action or the proposal, any senators wish to be heard on the Mabini amendment? Any senators wish to be heard on the Mabini amendment? Any objection to the amendment? On the main bill, are there any other senators that wish to be heard on the main bill? If not, the author is recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to make an amendment to add Senator Frank Blas, Senator Mabini, and Speaker Wampet to...as co-sponsors.
Hearing, no objection.
And also, I'd like to make another amendment to delete on page two, lines 21 to 25.
On the motion to delete on page two, lines 21 and 25, any senators wish to be heard on that amendment? To delete 21 and 25?
21 through 25.
21 through 25. Any...Senator Blas? Okay, well, let's get through this one. Any objection to Senator Adda's amendment to delete on page two, lines 21 through 25? Hearing, no objection. Senator Blas, did you... Took care of it? Then Senator Adda, you may close now.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their input and their amendments as they make this...strengthen this bill, and I hope I can also get their support on their votes to have this bill passed, and I'd like to make a motion to move this to the voting file.
On the motion to move Bill 150 to the voting file, any objection? Hearing, none. Senator Guthrie, you're up next. Bill 154. Senator...Senator Rispicio, are you ready with your bill until somebody comes and takes this? 163.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 163-31, as substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Governmental Operations, and Public Broadcasting, be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
On the request, any objection? Hearing, none.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm very excited that the one bill that I have on the session agenda, really, and I want to thank you for your work through your committee and our colleagues for moving this forward, and also the co-sponsors that joined me in this effort. Mr. Speaker, I'm very excited about this bill because, you know, as you know, in this day and age with the kind of technology we have, one would think that making electronic remittals of child support payments would just be as routine as how electronic deposits are made into our different, you know, into our payroll...from our payroll...for our payroll checks into our bank accounts. But what I've discovered in this bill and through this legislation moving forward is that the Department of Administration, through no fault of their own, Mr. Speaker, they still do...they do electronic transfer of the funds for all the government of Guam employees that owe child support, but yet they still manually compile a listing of how those funds are to be distributed. And so imagine that's the...that's what DOA does. Imagine on the receiving end from the Child Support Division, Attorney...Deputy Attorney General Bobby Cepeda and her staff will now have to comb through that list, sort those names out, and then determine through that list where those remittances ought to go. But if this child e-payment process were to be mandated by the government...for the government of Guam and for any private sector employee that has 10 employees or more, you would see that these monies that are supposed to go to assist the custodial parents in the rearing of these children, you would see that they'll get their money a lot faster. We've also discovered, Mr. Speaker, that in the case of the autonomous agencies, as advanced as they...that they are with our...running our power and water systems, I was very shocked to find out that they still do print checks for where these child support payments ought to go. And so in discussing this with Attorney Cepeda, she said that once we have this mechanism set up and mandated by law, as soon as these agencies or as soon as these private sector employers remit these payments, it'll automatically go into the child's account. And I think...and I think that's what the issue here is. The issue here is for those who are willing to make child support payments, for those that have been upstanding citizens and following through with their court order or whatever arrangement they may have, and also for those that have fallen behind and there's garnishments that have been made, there's a system set up through this bill that will not make it more difficult, Mr. Speaker, but will actually make it easier, even in the case of private sector employers. Imagine every month, if you had to type a manual check for one of your employees to satisfy their court ordered child support payment, that would really be an onerous task for you as an employer. But in this day and age, we have in this bill a provision that would make it a requirement that each employer with 10 or more employees of at least one employee has child support payment obligations, that these remittances be done electronically, and most...most, especially, Mr. Speaker...most...Madam Speaker now, most especially, Madam Speaker, these remittances have to be done, I believe, on the same day the employee gets paid, so that way the employee and the custodial parent will be able to receive these much-needed resources. So I ask our colleagues for their consideration and support of this bill. I want to say that I don't believe that it'll hamper anyone in the private sector. We set the threshold for 10 employees or more, so at 10 employees, we at least assume that they have a computer, they have access to the internet, and this is how they would able...be able to set up those remittances. And so doing this really is going to mean that the child will get their much-needed resource however that's determined. And also, Madam Speaker, this bill would allow for a processing fee of $3 per transaction and that this fee be paid by the employer and shall not be deducted from the employee's pay or withholdings amount. And so... And so, this provision is set up so that these, so that the intent of this bill can be satisfied. And so, I thank you for the opportunity to present on Bill 163-31 as substituted.
On the motion, does anyone who'd like to speak on it? Speaker Panglin, and you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly understand the desire to implement such a program like this. I'm just kind of wondering because maybe we should bring in, in some area here, the Department of Administration. Because if I understand it correctly, I'm not sure if it's the Department of Administration that processes the payments for these child support that are sent out? Or is it the Attorney General itself? I think all of the child support payments are processed by the Department of Administration. So, maybe in some fashion here, I guess, you know, that they be included, but maybe we're just, it would be sufficient to say that the Office of the Attorney General will have a system in place. You know, again, that's my concern. The other concern I have, Madam Speaker, is this 10 employees or more. And I just looked at that and it just occurred to me that sometimes you have 10 employees and, you know, you have four full-time employees and six part-time employees. And do we want to go to that level now where you, should it be something different? I mean, are we, do we mean 10 employees, period? Or do we mean 10 full-time employees? And so, that might be a little bit onerous, whereas, you know, a person with a husband and wife running something and hiring four or five part-time employees, or six or seven, may not have the capacity to do this. So, I'm a little concerned about that threshold without that clarification. And maybe, maybe we just let it go and we'll see and try to work it out later. But I was thinking, maybe we need to make it, you know, account for those companies that don't have full-time employees and then require them to implement this. But the other thing is, I wanted to make sure that if we're already charging a fee for setting this up, that this should be not, there shall be no other fee assessed on the, on that transaction other than this $3 per transaction. As you know, there may be other transaction fees that the government is setting up. And so, we just want to be sure that we're not going to be double-charging individuals for the same transaction. So that if DOA decides that, and implements the convenience fee, for example, that if they transmit it through a credit card payment, that there's a convenience fee and then there's another $3 fee on top of that. So, maybe I want to make just at this time, an amendment under the processing fees where it says, "The fee shall be paid by the employer and shall not be deducted from the employee's pay or withholding interest." Such fee shall be, no other fee shall be applicable for, you know, no other fee may be charged for this transaction. So that there's only one transaction, and really, it is that transaction fee, it is that convenience fee that we're being charged. So, if I could just make that amendment that would come at the end of subsection C on page four, say, "No other fee shall be assessed on this transaction."
On the amendment, which is on page four, at the end of line four, where's "No other fee shall be assessed." No objections? So ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And on the, on the employee, 10 or more full-time employees?
Yes, on page three?
Page two.
Oh, two.
And wherever 10 or more employees appears in the bill, that it'll be 10 or more full-time employees.
I'm sorry, can you bring that, show me where that is? On page two?
On page two, line 10.
Because I see it on page three.
And then there's another one on line 11, on page three.
Line 11, okay. And what is the amendment?
At full-time. 10 or more full-time employees.
10 or more full-time employees.
Right.
Okay. On the amendment, no objections? So ordered.
And I think DOA will qualify.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's Dusmasi.
You're welcome. On the motion, I recognize Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while I certainly appreciate and I support the intent of the legislation and any means necessary possible to be able to ensure that the individuals that basically owe and are charged with having to provide child support payments, that we provide the processes and available for them to be able to do this. And I agree with the author of the legislation that in this age of technology, that there are so many ways to be able to do this. My God, I just saw in a commercial last night, all you have to do is take a photocopy of your check, you know, and that could be added as a deposit. Only my bank could be able to do that and I'd be fine. But that said, Madam Speaker, is my concern that I have with this is it seems to put an onus on the employer to be, to ensure that the employee or that employee that they have that owes child support lives up to his or her responsibility. And I appreciate this, okay? And maybe if that be, you know, what is the current practice? I'm just a little concerned of that. My concern now, Madam Speaker, and granted, it may be done right now in the courts, and this is how the court is ordering it, I just don't want then the employees not to have on their application forms, their employment application forms, "Do you owe child support?" Because if they do owe child support, then they're going to recognize, "Okay, well, if I'm going to have to do this by EFT because I have 10 or more full-time employees, I'm going to have an additional charge." And I don't want to blame the employer for doing this, but you know, the thing is, and it goes back to the responsibility of that individual who's supposed to file the child support. So, I don't have a problem with this. In principle, I really don't have a problem with providing that opportunity. And I appreciate the attempt and to be able to minimize the cost associated with this. I guess my concern here is, and maybe, you know, and the legislation is fashioned after what is already accepted by the court, and maybe that's something that should be handled by the court, and we're just following the procedures and mandates provided by the But, again, it's placing that onus on the employer. You know, because, you know, other than that, and I appreciate now that we've clarified with regards to the number of employees, but in order to, I guess one side of me says, "I'd like to be able to expand this a little bit more so it provides opportunities for other employees." Because, and maybe if the good author could yield and a discussion in a recess with regards to companies that already have contracted their payroll, the processing, administering of the payroll. And if those companies have less than 10 employees, if that can be considered. So, if I can just take a 30-second timeout to talk to the author.
We're going to take a brief recess. 29 seconds.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to be able to speak to the author. And I think that as a result of the conversation, you know, there is that, the opportunity for that type of service to be provided to other companies. It's just, I understand, recognize that it just makes it mandatory for companies with 10 or more. Again, I've expressed my concern with regards to the onus placed on the employer, but, and I recognize that, you know, that is already the practice that's been done by the judicial system and, you know, respecting, respecting the decisions of that other branch of government with regards to this process and seeing how this branch can only just help to bolster and to strengthen that, then I understand. And maybe by the expression of my concern should be directed, you know, to that other branch. Because again, it's an onus that's being placed on employer, and I just don't want the employer, one day, to come and say, "Since you got child support, you can't work for me." Then we're going to run into another issue. So, I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to be able to speak to this. And I'm going to listen and attend to the further discussion on this bill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Senator Palacios on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I may share my personal experience with the business I'm associated with, how this is going about. A new employee or prospective employee, especially a newly hired employee, is not required to declare that, but there's a form mandated by the Office of the Attorney General. And this business I'm associated with, we fill out this form automatically, mandatory, and then we fax it in to the AG. Now, if you don't owe child support, then it'll be just an information that's not useful. Now, if you happen to be owing child support, it's going to show, you don't have to declare it, it's still going to show on the registry. So, there, there's no, there's no avoiding it or no, it's not even asked by the employer. Secondly, the way it's done is that all this, if it's deducted through payroll, then there'll be one balloon check issued to the Attorney General Child Support Division. Attached to it is a listing of the people from whom payroll deduction was made, referencing the case number. And that's how it's recorded, but the check is made out to the Office of the Attorney General Child Support. I understand that then that check is deposited into the child support account, and it is now DOA that will release that for payment. Or against that account will be then written an individual check or the amount then is transferred to the receiving, to the custodial parent. That's how DOA is involved, is they are the keeper of the account into which all this deduction is paid. And then, the AG will draw from there. And how I know this, because sometimes DOA is not timely in depositing that into that. But that's the current situation. With respect to the $3 per transaction, this would be new, and I think it can be absorbed by the employer. But this would be new because when we cut, when we, when the check is cut by the private company, it is just for the amount that's withheld from the absent parent and no other additional fee such as the $3. So, with this, then if this business employee, so many that, 10 of whom are paying child support, I would think then that there will be additional $30 then fee against that company. I don't object to that, but I'm just saying that there's no fee now assigned for the processing of the child support payment through hard copy checks. So, that's a remark. Of course, I support electronic deposit because it expedites, of course, ma'am, the accounting process, the disbursement of money, the availability of money to the custodial parent. This, of course, would expedite because that's the purpose of that, is to get this amount to the child that needed it and for whom the deduction is withheld. According to this, and I guess on the processing fee, it says here up to $3. And the Child Support Division, of course, by this bill, is still is required to set, I guess, policies and procedures as to really what would be the amount, but according to the testimony and here in the bill, it should not be in excess of $3. It could be $2 or $1. I rise in support of this and there is my remark is just for information. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Palacios. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Rispicio, since we don't have anyone, would you like to close? So, on the motion then to send Bill 160 then to the voting file without any objections? So ordered. I understand that Senator Guthridge, you are ready? Senator Guthridge on Bill 154?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to move on then to the Vice Speaker on 159.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I asked to accept, the body to accept Bill 159-31 as substituted by the Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs.
It's already accepted, so through the third reading?
Accepted?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move Bill 151 to the voting file, I mean, to the, 159 to third reading and ask for an opportunity to speak.
Yes, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As you know, over the last several years since I've been a member of the legislature, this procurement issue has been something that I've been very, very concerned about. In the last session, I even had the Attorney, last, in the 30th Guam Legislature, I had the Attorney General prepare, proposed a mandatory legislation to try to clean up the Procurement Act because I was really concerned about the fact that we were having so many protests, and the ones that were suffering from the protests were our children. Schools were being delayed in opening because of protest over food service. Schools were being delayed in open because they were fighting over something, either the opening, the building of a new school building. There were various other issues, books, everything else was, everything was being challenged. And I really thought we needed to have a procurement law that everybody could understand and work with, that wasn't going to be protested and, even when protested, be protracted in protesting. At one point, I suggested to people that maybe we just adopt the federal procurement rules in law since we were, at that time, going into the military buildup. But everybody said that was even more onerous, and somebody described it to me as having rules on the building of a... rules on the building of a, procurement rules for the building of a satellite to buy books. And it would be just too technical and too much for us. So I finally have given up in trying to get people to rewrite it and propose it, because one side always objects to it, or a group objects to it. So this time, I am proposing that we establish a procurement, Guam Procurement Advisory Council, and it'll be comprised of 12 individuals in the community that'll be appointed by the governor or by virtue of their positions to sit on this. And it's everybody that is and has been involved in procurement. The Attorney General or a designee, the public auditor or his or her designee, and the public auditor has been doing all the procurement appeals, the compilot of law, the Chief Procurement Officer, the Director of Administration, the Director of Public Works, and appoint, an attorney in private practice admitted and appointed by the Magatlahi, a resident of Guam, experienced in procurement and the construction industry selected by the Magatlahi, and Guam resident experienced in procurement from retail or service sector selected by the Magatlahi. Also, the Board of Accountancy, and I had also included the Dean of School of Business and Public Administration at the University of Guam, in the hoping that I could convince the University of Guam to do a certificated program for procurement officers throughout the government. That still hasn't happened, and I'm hoping with your assistance that maybe something we'll be able to realize. Well, anyway, these 12 people are to meet and to start discussing, reviewing the procurement laws, and to come up with recommendations on how the procurement law can be amended, streamlined, or whatever, to try to make it more efficient and able for everybody else to be able to use it, and to be able to prevent protracted protest while still giving everybody involved the opportunity to make sure that there isn't any graft or corruption in procurement by allow, not precluding people from being able to protest. And the law also has that, I know it might be a little short, but by December 1st of 2011, to give its first report about where it's, what its status is, or whether or not it's even met, a second report on April 1st of 2012 indicating its progress, and the final report to be April, August 1st, 2012, on their progress, and at that point, hopefully, draft legislation for consideration by this 31st Guam Legislature. And I'm hoping that by this time next year, we would have been able to have the public hearing and pass a new procurement statute that the entire government will be able to use. And will improve the system so that our children don't continue to suffer by the procurement problems that, and protests that we've had in the past, and more importantly, that we can move forward with the millions of dollars that we still need to utilize for construction of the projects in the hot bond, the projects that are in the lockbox for the era funds that are now in there for improvement of the DOE system, the highway projects that we're still going to be doing on our own as a territorial, local government, as opposed to the highway funds that are being sent to us for the military buildup. And so we have, I believe the governor said the other day, almost a half a billion dollars in construction money that's being held up. And I'd like to be able to see that out, employing people and bringing down the unemployment rate, and just circulating in the community, Madam Speaker. And so I'm hoping that if we can improve the procurement statute by bringing these 12 brains together, and having them come up with a recommendation to us, that they won't then come in at the hearing and have 12 different points of view and say, "No, we, you know, we oppose this," or "Oppose that." They can come in with a report and a recommendation that by this time next year, we'll have a new procurement statute that will benefit the people and the government of Guam. I'm hoping for my colleagues' support in this endeavor so that we can address this issue, and I thank you for the opportunity for, to present this to the body.
You're welcome. Vice Speaker, on the motion, any, Speaker Pengin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the intent of the bill and so forth, even its membership. However, I do want to make one amendment, and that would be on line 1, page 2, where it says that the governor's designated, a senior member of the governor's staff designated by the governor of Guam who shall serve as chairperson of the council. I would like to propose that we have the council elect its chair rather than being designated by the governor. And so my motion would be to delete "who shall serve as chairperson of the council" and add instead, the chair of the, add, the chair of the council shall be elected by its members.
And right, right on, after, I was going to say, right, you don't want it with, okay, so it's after 12. And after 12, it'll be that the council would elect its chair? The chair, okay, or the chair of the council?
Yes.
Or the council, yes, shall elect its chair?
Elect its chair.
Okay. So on, on the amendment, the First Amendment is in lines 2 and 3, to delete there "who shall serve as chairperson" on page 2, without any objection, so ordered. And the Second Amendment then is after the number 12, or after line 18?
Right.
Will be that the council shall elect its chair?
Yes.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for my colleagues. There's no doubt, Madam Speaker, that we have many instances in which either the implementation or the law itself has led to these protests by vendors who are seeking a fair and level playing field within the competition for businesses that the government of Guam engages in with the community. And it is time that we move forward on trying to update our processes. And I think that one of the features, of course, that is very crucial, is that whatever change we make, we want to make sure that it enhances the trust that the business individual or entity that will compete for government business, in the process itself, that it is open, fair, and honest, and that the determination of what is the best deal and the best value for the government dollar will be done objectively and with criteria in place that will ensure that objectivity and fairness. And so I look forward to the recommendations that will be made. I'm sure that there will be changes in how we do things, and even the philosophical change behind our procurement law, and may move away from trying to find the cheapest and most inexpensive to best value and best price for the government dollar and the public dollar that we spend on behalf of the government. And so I certainly want to lend my support for this, and I think the timelines that have been put in place will ensure that we do get something, and that it will assist this legislative body in making a determination on the legislative and legal structure that needs to be changed to update our procurement regulations. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and so this must.
You're very welcome. On the motion, I recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while I stand in support of the legislation and the recent amendment to basically allow the council to be able to elect its own chairman, the question, the concern that I have here with regards to the enactment is, and although we have a first and a second report date, we don't have anybody who's going to be responsible for impaneling and making sure they come to the table at a certain timeframe. And maybe if we can, if there was amendment here to basically say that the commission or the council shall meet within a certain time period after enactment of this legislation, that would help to start the process, because I don't want that first report in December 1st saying we have failed to, we have failed to meet.
Would you like a recess?
So, can I have a recess, please?
Okay, so ordered. Within 15 days?
Yes.
Okay, so to call the first meeting within 15 days of enactment?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
On the amendment, any objections? Anyone like speak on it? None? So, so ordered. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on Bill 159? Vice Speaker, do you want to close, or do you want to send it down? Vice Speaker?
Just one, before I close, if I might be asked for the indulgence of the body for one more amendment.
Okay, please.
The Guam Bar member to be selected, it's number eight, the attorney in private practice to be selected by the Guam Bar Association.
Okay, so the, selected rather than admitted, but selected by?
Well, admitted and selected by the Guam Bar.
Oh, admitted and selected. Okay, so on the amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
At that point, I'd like to thank my colleagues for assisting in improving the bill, and I'd like to hope for their support when it gets to the voting file and move the bill to the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Looking at the time, it is 12 noon. uh, looking at the time, uh, it is 12 noon. Uh, Senator Respecho, it's 12 noon. You want to, Vice Speaker, can you please make the motion then to?
Madam Speaker, I, I move that we recess until 2:00 this afternoon.
Without any objections, we will be, uh, recess until 2:00 this afternoon.